Good evening. It is a couple of minutes past 6:30. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order again. Is it back to order since we went to a closed session?
Yeah.
Back to order.
No need to roll call or anything.
And we don't need to do a roll call at this point. Cool. Todd, are there any announcements or reports to be made from today's closed session?
Thank you, yes. We had three items under anticipated initiation. The council voted five all, five to zero on all three cases to initiate litigation. One of the items pertains to 18521 Jokatal and the property owner, Mr. Nguyen, because of the operation of an illegal short-term rental. For everybody listening out there, short-term rentals are illegal in the city of Villa Park, so please do not do that.
Could you say that one more time, just?
Yeah, short-term rentals are illegal in the city of Villa Park.
Thank you.
So, and ignorance of the law is not a defense, so please don't make me visit you. Actually, don't make the sheriff visit you. And then there are two other matters, but because those complaints haven't been served yet, we'll withhold those until served on the defendants. That is all.
Thank you, sir. For our invocation tonight, tonight, I'd like to have us all spend a moment in our own manner of reverence. I'd like us to reflect and be thankful for all the good things in our life, whether it's a successful career or a day with really pleasant weather. Big things and small, they matter. We all face challenges, but it's the things that we're grateful for. Large things, small things, all the things that we appreciate in our life that really make life well living for. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
If you please, could we also do a moment of silence for those lives that were lost in Texas today in that horrific incident that took place at the school? I tell you, drew tears to my eyes as I sat there and watched it. And I think we all have to be thankful to God that we have such a great law enforcement community here and so forth. But we do need to, if we could, have a moment of silence for all those children that lost their lives today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Today, I'd like to ask Councilmember Pitts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand, face the flag, hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card, the blue cards in the back, to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the back of the room. And speakers will be called in individually during the public comment section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers were also able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. I don't see. Our, okay, our distinguished citizen is delayed. So we're going to come back to that after a moment. And we're going to move on to, the first presentation on our thing is the, is that not the, oh, we, that's right, that's second. Okay, so first is going to be the lottery. Call for lottery drawing for fireworks stand at Villa Park High School. City Villa Park has completed the review of two applications from the Villa Park Gridiron Boosters and the Villa Park March and Spartans to enter the fireworks sales lottery for the booth at Villa Park High School. I'd like to have, okay. So we need to just select the, one of the two applicants?
Well, you just pull out.
Out of a hat? Okay. We'll just pause for a minute and let that come back. So I think I picked last year as mayor pro tem. I'm not sure why that, but, so I'm going to pass the buck too. I'm going to, I'm going to pass along, designate the honor.
And the winner is March and Spartans.
March and Spartans. Congratulations to the March and Spartans. I'd like to use this time to remind everyone to celebrate the Fourth of July safely and that the use of fireworks is, that are not certified as safe and sane by the California State Fire Marshal are prohibited in the city of Villa Park and will be strictly enforced. So I see our distinguished citizen of the month has arrived. Dr. Kisheri, welcome. Good to see you. If you'd like to just come forward, I'm going to speak about you for just a moment, and we'll, we'll jump right into a brief honoring of you. So let me tell you all a little bit about Dr. Ray Kisheri. He has a history of over 40 years' experience as a senior executive in pulmonary disease, internal medicine, and intensive care medicine. In addition to his successful 30-year private practice, Dr. Kisheri's career at St. Joseph Hospital in Orange, California, saw him in multiple disciplines and roles, including medical director, chief of staff, and chief medical officer. And he is the first physician to be chairman of the board at St. Joseph's Hospital. His tenure with St. Joseph and years of serving as a highly influential medical consultant has also given him a diversified healthcare background in private, public, clinical, academic, and managed care settings within leading hospitals, private offices, multi-specialty group practices, and multi-state networks. Dr. Kisheri is a fellow with the American College of Chest Physicians and was awarded the Values in Action Award in 2003. He was also given the Physician in Excellence Award by the Orange County Medical Association in 2006, and was named a top doctor by the U.S. News and World Report in 2009 and 2011. For a year and a half during COVID, Dr. Kisheri was on KFI at 6:00 PM. That show was the number-one show during that time slot in Southern California, which is the number-one market for radio in the country. On a personal note, Dr. Kisheri has raised five daughters in Villa Park. And I wanted to give you a moment to talk about your experience in Villa Park and just, it's interesting, like, walking around the city, visiting people, just how many special residents we have, people that have been here a long time and have contributed greatly. And I'm honored to have you with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Zerman, Zerman. And, you know, it's an honor to be here, and it's an honor to be recognized. So thank you all very much. You know, I made a few good decisions in my life. One of them was marrying my wife.
Who's here tonight, Colleen. And she, she had a knee transplant, so this is her first outing. She, you know, she, she braved pain. I think there might be some drugs involved, but nonetheless, she's, she's here.
Thanks for making it.
Yeah. And, you know, the other was my chosen profession. Medicine's been wonderfully rewarding. And the third is Villa Park. And it's been an absolutely wonderful place to live and raise our children. When we first, we were in training, and Colleen would drive around Orange County because she was a visiting physical therapist. And, you know, she, she said, you know, I found this little town, you know, that maybe, you know, reminded us a little bit of the East Coast because there were bigger houses. And we drove up here, and I said, Colleen, there's no way we can afford anything in this town. I mean, it, you know, the homes were big and the lots were big. And anyway, to make a long story short, we found this house that had pretty much been destroyed by a guy and his five, five children. And it was perfect for us because it was so destroyed, we could afford it. So we moved in, and Colleen likes the joke that, you know, we were so poor, we didn't have curtains for five years. But nonetheless, we started gradually fixing it up, and we met our wonderful neighbors who we're still friends with and our kids are still friends with. And that's, that's unique in Southern California, and that's unique in Villa Park. And, you know, I can remember when I used to jog around Villa Park, and I'd see people jogging and picking up trash off the streets and jogging and, you know, taking people's mail into their house because they couldn't get out, out of the house, or, you know, knocking on doors to say, you know, "Are you okay?" kind of thing. And with new people moving the neighborhood, people taking them things to welcome in, welcome them into the neighborhood. Very unique, very wonderful. But I tell you what really convinced me about how wonderful Villa Park is. My, you know, when you have five daughters, your youngest one is your smartest, right? Because she's decided that she's seen all the flubba, flubbaity bubs above her, and so clearly, she's the best. So she goes off to college, and then she goes off to Chicago, gets a job, and then she comes home to Villa Park for Christmas holidays. And she goes out and jogs around, and she comes back to the house and looks at me and says, "You know, Dad, you brought us up in a pretty nice place." And that's about the best, the best compliment I could have received from her because, boy, once you go out in the real world and you realize how unbelievably terrific Villa Park is, it, you know, it makes you realize that you're a very, very lucky person. Colleen and I actually looked to move at one time because we thought, gee, the house is kind of big, and maybe we ought to move. And we looked all around the beach, we looked all around, you know, San Clemente and Carlsbad and even up, up into the Ventura area. Stayed in Villa Park, and I think we're going to be in Villa Park. Unfortunately, you folks are stuck with us, I think, for quite a while. But I want to thank you very much. It's nice to be recognized in your hometown. And, you know, after 40-some years, this is my hometown. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Can we get, Dr. Kisheri, can we get a picture with you?
I don't know why you'd want one.
Yeah?
Okay. Colleen, would you be able to maybe make it up?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question quick, Mayor? Does your daughter, one of your daughters teach at St. Jean de Lestonock?
Absolutely.
She's my daughter's kindergarten teacher and volleyball coach. His daughter, whenever any kid has a loose tooth in the school, they go to, I don't know what you taught her, but she knows how to pull out teeth.
Yeah, she can pull it straight. She doesn't have to knock on the door. Talk about your husband. Congratulations. What did you get here? Moved here in, Colleen, '80? '79?
'79.
'79, yeah.
I think in particular, it was talking to, talking to Dr. Kisheri earlier that reminded me how being thankful and appreciating stuff in our life really makes things matter. So I appreciate that as well. Also, really nice to have somebody say nice things about our own town, too. It's always good to hear. So our next presentation is right here. Sorry about this. Give me one second. Is we, thank you, appreciate it. Is our proclamation for Older Americans Month. Villa Park, City of Villa Park would like to recognize the month of May as Older Americans' Month. Age My Way is the 2022 theme, and that certainly describes the OC Senior Citizens Advisory Council advocacy work on behalf of Orange County's older adults. They are charged with the responsibility of advising the OC Board of Supervisors and Office on Aging on Matters Affecting Seniors in Orange County. On behalf of the City of Villa Park, we thank you for all that you do, and we are honored to recognize the month of May as Older Americans Month. This is the proclamation. As our representative, would you care to say anything? Crystal, please.
So unfortunately, the timing didn't, didn't work out well for a couple of the senior senior centers representatives feel able to be here to accept it. So as the committee member on the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, I'm happy to accept it, and then I can take it to the Orange Senior Center and present it to them. And in my reports tonight, they focus around May being older persons' awareness month. So I'll be happy to take that and deliver it.
Excellent. Officially hand that off. Thank you. Okay, next up is our Orange County Sheriff's Department. Captain, if you would.
Council, thank you for having me here. To present our report, this will be for the month of April 2022. During the month of April, we responded to you a total of 239 calls for service. And some of the noteworthy incidents during that time were, we had two residential burglaries, one on Wolf Drive, one on Fernando. The one on Wolf Drive was, unknown items were stolen, but the loss was about $1,500 in property damage. And then we had three petty theft incidents, one here on Santiago Boulevard, checks stolen from the mailbox, one on Los Flores, vehicle theft, and one on Henderson Way, mail theft package from the front of the porch area. We also had a shoplifting incident, Santiago and Wanda, in the shopping center. We had a battery report on Serrano. This was at the middle school between a couple of students. And we did have one drunk driving arrest on Lemon and Santiago. We also handled a bunch, numerous traffic incidents. We had a total of 21 parking citations were issued, and the patrol deputy issued 34 traffic citations. We did not have any of the enhanced traffic enforcement of the motor sergeant during this month, but he started in May, and he's already given me his report. So substantial number of sites have already been issued for that. It's a total of 55 citations in the traffic and parking citations. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about, cover this message point from Sheriff Barnes, and talk about homelessness and social issues, and what the Orange County Sheriff's Department is doing, and how that is going to also impact the city of Villa Park. So the Orange County Sheriff's Department remains at the forefront of mitigating the impacts of homelessness to our community. We're doing this by proactively doing outreach and enforcement. This past year, the Sheriff's Department created the Behavioral Health Bureau, which is a collaborative effort between the Orange County Healthcare Administration, Social Services, Veterans Affairs, and the California Superior Court and the diversion programs they have. So it's an all-encompassing approach to dealing with the mental health issues and the homeless issues so that we can hopefully do something to manage that a little better. So we're not just, for lack of a better term, kind of spinning our wheels, issuing people citations, and then they're right back out in the street without any resources available. And that's also been imparted in our custodial setting in the jails. We have Behavioral Health Bureau component that's in there to help the individuals who do end up getting arrested, to help them receive services while in custody, and then also help them transition out of custody so that when they are released from jail, they have services available to them right away. They have somewhere to go, whether it's a treatment house, a halfway house for someone to live, if they are, do any, like, you know, Veterans Affairs, financial benefits, welfare benefits like that. So they have those things available to them when they get out, so they're not right back in a situation where they're trying to scramble to figure out how to make ends meet. The Behavioral Health Bureau work has been illustrated in the following numbers for 2021. So they responded to 10,864 calls for service involving persons experiencing homelessness. And then we were able to transport a total of 397 subjects to the BeWell Campus, which is in Orange, right off the 22 and 57. It's a program where we have folks that we encounter in the field that we don't really want to take to jail. We can take them to this program, and it kind of fills the gap as opposed to having to take folks to the hospital and overwhelm our hospital. So they have services there for folks to help them deal with, you know, if they're experiencing acute alcohol-related or drug-related incidents, to help them get through that and then get a managed program system of care for them. And the Sheriff's Department's goal is to get help for those who need it and protect our community from encampments and other impacts of homelessness. We're pretty fortunate in Villa Park that we don't, you know, have a higher rate of homelessness, but we do have individuals that do come through at times. We have several deputies in the North Patrol Bureau, which are trained in behavioral health, crisis intervention training. And then we just recently added a full-time position for a behavioral health deputy in the North Patrol Bureau, who will also assist in Villa Park as needed with any individuals who we need to get into that system of care to help prevent any, any issues impacting us. And that concludes my report. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Since our last city council meeting, there were 26 incidents within the city of Villa Park. None of any significance. Engine 23 went down and assisted at the coastal fire. They were there for two days. The Orange County Fire Authority also has resources that we sent out into the state of New Mexico to help them mitigate their wildland fires. This month, I'd like to cover firework safety. The Orange County Fire Authority would like to give everybody just a few simple tips so you and your family can enjoy fireworks safely throughout the Fourth of July holiday and through the month of June. Make sure you obey your laws. Safe and sane fireworks are only legal in some cities in Orange County, Villa Park being one of them. Make sure when you purchase your fireworks, they are safe and sane, and they are fire marshal-approved through the state of California. If you're going to light your fireworks, please make sure that you light them outdoors, light them away from vegetation, people, homes, vehicles, as well as flammable materials. Don't consume alcohol or use drugs when lighting fireworks. Make sure you have that bucket of water close by you, and if you can, make sure you have a water hose that is charged and ready to deploy instead of just throwing them away in trash cans. Put them in the bucket of water. Fireworks should only be handled by adults, not children. Sparklers exceed temperatures of over 2,000 degrees. That's hotter than a blowtorch, and it'll melt gold. And if there is an incident or an accident, please make sure you call 911 immediately. Make sure you cool the burns, and if there's an eye injury, please do not rub your eyes. Every year, thousands of people get burned and have eye injuries that are caused by fireworks. Please make sure that you practice these safe tips to ensure that you and your family are able to spend time together safely, and you don't have to see us pull up at your residence or your neighbor's house. We do have an anonymous number that you can, I'm sorry, we have a phone number that you can report illegal or not fireworks anonymously. The number 714-538-3501. And then one of the biggest things I want to remind people of is you see the wildfires. We talk about every year, it's a year-round season now, and you're seeing it with the coastal fire, we saw it with the Emerald Fire. Up in Northern California, we're seeing fires, and actually Riverside County and San Diego. So with fireworks coming up, with the Fourth of July, even Memorial Day in the month of June, I would just, please, exercise extreme caution when using your fireworks. That's all I have in the report.
Thank you. Yes?
Thanks. Could you please make the distinction, just because Villa Park allows safe and sane fireworks, and I know they go on sale, I think, like, July 1st or something, right? They really aren't legal in the city of Villa Park until the actual Fourth of July. Is that correct?
Correct. And that is how it is with the other cities in Orange County as well. They can start purchasing them at a certain date. Yours is July 1st, but it's only legal for you to light on the Fourth of July.
So, so if, if, if someone is lighting them off on the second or the third, then they should call that number and let people know, and let you know, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because some people think that just because you're allowed to buy them means that that's when you're allowed to light them as well. And I've tried to explain that, that in fact is not the case. I think it's only from the hours of like 10:00 in the morning. There was like an hour time, right? 10:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night or something?
Yes.
And then, I know last year, there was, and, and they were, they were lit, they were lit in front of Villa Park Home, and they were the big ones. And I was really shocked that nobody said anything. We could see them from where I was standing, and I thought they were actually over on the other side of the reservoir, but come to find out, they were actually over on the other side of Wanda or Villa Park Road over by the school, the elementary school off Lincoln. So I really think it's important that neighbors recognize that although they're fun, they need to be reported, the, those big ones that are not allowed.
For sure. I mean, and we have this number for you to call. I know, again, it's anonymous, but the biggest part of the fireworks is making sure that nobody gets hurt, they're using the right ones that are legal, the safe and sane, and just where they light them, because we go to so many incidents, especially on the Fourth of July, that are, are fires or people just careless with the fireworks.
Yep. So, thank you.
No. Thank you, sir. Next up is Villa Park Library.
Hello. Hi, pardon me, good evening. So my update covers what we have going on in June and July. OC Public Libraries, first of all, we have a service update. We've partnered with California State Parks and the California State Library, and now we offer free State Parks Vehicle Day Use passes. This was on quite a few of the news venues, you may have seen it. So these park passes, they do check out for two weeks. You hang them on your rearview mirror, and you get into the parks for free. So it's a real nice service. They are extremely popular, so please call or come by the library. We'll have to put you on the waitlist for that, but once you do get it, it does check out for two weeks. For library programming, we have our summer reading program starting on June 13th, and that will go through July 30th. This year's theme is Read Beyond the Beaten Path, and we have something for children, teen and adults. For children, you sign up for the reading program and you log the number of days you read. 20 days will get you entered in an opportunity drawing for a gift card. And events we have for the kids include a program with magician Artie Loon on Monday, June 20th. We also have family storytimes besides our regular Saturday storytime. We also have Mondays at 5:30, and Saturdays are at 10:00 AM. And this program I'm super excited about, it's a new program called Reading Buddies, where we will have teen volunteers read with children in grades K through four, and they will help them with their reading skills, which is really wonderful, so that they don't have that summer slide on their reading skills. And that program will be offered Tuesdays, 10:00 AM to noon, and Thursdays, 2:00 to 4:00. For teens, we will have two Mondays of teen crafts on June 27th and July 18th, both days at 2:00 PM. And for the teens as well, they can become a teen volunteer, and we really encourage teens to come to the library, get an application, and join us. It's an opportunity to provide a valuable service to the community and learn some new skills. For adults, we're pleased to host author Naomi Hirahara on Saturday, July 16th at 2:00 PM. And Ms. Hirahara is an award-winning author, and she'll provide a presentation and a book signing, and her latest historical mystery is called Clark and Division. The library is also hosting two University of California Master Gardener events this summer. They're quite timely. Saturday, July 23rd, is on drought-tolerant gardening. And the one on Saturday, August 6th, is organic composting, and both of those are at 2:00 PM. And in addition, our book chat discussion group will continue on the last Wednesday of each month. For materials in the library, we've added a new database, it's Value Line, and a lot of people may be familiar with that. Value Line provides data, news analysis, and tools for investors. And now we have the database available for our patrons, and all you need is your library card and PIN code. card and PIN code, and it can be accessed through our website, ocpl.org. And finally, the library tip for May is OC Public Libraries has a free app that can be found on the Google or the Apple App site, and this app has many functions and capabilities. You can look for books, placeholders, check what you have on your account, renew items, and the name of the app to look for is My O C P L. And finally, we look forward to serving the community of Villa Park. Many ways you can contact us, by email, by phone, by coming in. We also have a chat service. And look for our flyers for all of these events on the city's feeder email as well as on our website.
Excellent. Thank you. There's so much going on in our library for just a small town. You've done a great job. Thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything for our librarian? Thanks again.
Thank you.
And yeah, the feeder is a great source for all of that if people are looking for a recap of any of that to check out the feeder where that stuff is there. So we're on to council member meeting attendance reports, starting with the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control.
Thank you. So I don't know if I mentioned this last meeting, but the Operations Committee that I sit on selected a new chair, and I drew the short straw on that one.
Congratulations.
Operations Committee Chair, which actually I love. So there, when I give, just for clarification, when I give the vector control reports, I kind of combine operations, budget, and finance, and then the regular trustee meetings. So there was no operations meeting for us in the month of May for the budget and finance, which I'm no longer chair because you can't be chair two years in a row. We, that met on Thursday, May 12th. The staff provided an update on the district's two benefit assessment districts. There's Assessment District Number One and Assessment District Number Two, and staff recommended that the district increase the Assessment District Number Two from the current rate of $7.70 per unit household to a rate of $8.30 for the coming fiscal year. The committee voted unanimously to support staff recommendation and to recommend approval to the full board, and that ended up being on the agenda for the May 19th meeting. And then staff also prepared the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget, and the committee voted unanimously to support the staff recommendations and to recommend approval to the full board. That then did get carried over to the May 19th meeting, and both the Assessment District Increase was approved along with approving the fiscal year 2022, 2023 operating budget. And so that's the budget and finance part. And then for the general meeting, we get the report for the fire ants, the flea-borne typhus, and then also the West Nile virus. So as of May 18th, there are no human infections with West Nile virus in the county of Orange, which is good. One positive mosquito sample in Fullerton. And then for the flea-borne typhus, there are seven cases, none in Villa Park and none in the surrounding area of Orange as well either. So those seven cases, Anaheim, Garden Grove, Cypress, La Habra, Santa Ana, unincorporated North Tustin, and Westminster. And then for outreach activity, the National Mosquito Awareness Week is June 19th through the 25th, and then they're launching the 2022 campaign starting on June 18th. And that is it for that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next up is Orange County Sanitation District. We had a meeting on April 27th and then also May 4th. Talked about the accreditation that OC SAN received to test wastewater for PFAS. They're the first municipal wastewater laboratory in the state of California accredited. Oh, sorry. I thought you were. And, sorry, it's one of only 10 labs in the state accredited to do so, and the other nine are commercial labs. So this was a big step for Orange County Sanitation District. Also amazing to see an organization like that in our area that steps forward and gets that accredited. Throughout the month of May, they also hosted, OC SAN hosted five vendor workshops. First one started May 3rd. They have additional ones scheduled throughout the year. If you're interested in looking at one of these workshops, you can go to the ocsan.gov/doinbusiness site for more information. And then they've, also talked about the month of May being awareness for OC SAN's Wastewater 101, which is just a, they're free citizens advisory academies where you can go and learn about the 180 million gallons of wastewater and how it's handled throughout Orange County. This is a state-of-the-art facility that is looked to from organizations and places all over the world, and it's right in our backyard. If you're interested in more about, more information about OC SAN, they host these things to spread awareness and let people see what's behind the mirrors. That is all I have for specific stuff to report on, and I will report again after our next meeting. Next up is Fire Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 28th, I attended the board meeting for the Orange County Fire Authority on behalf of the city, and for lack of better words, most of the conversation and the highlights were about budget negotiations and closed sessions. Those are ongoing, obviously confidential, I can't really report on that. Of more significant note, too, I think, our general public and residents, was my attendance at the Budget and Finance Committee on May 11th. Very happy and proud to report that the Fire Authority is doing very well financially, and they have a projected budget of $577 million. The revenues went up $22 million, and their expenditures only went up $7 million. So obviously, a net gain in revenues by, I should say, by and large, most of the revenues come from property taxes, a lion's share of it. I think it's upwards of 65%. The Snowball Plan, which helps unfunded liabilities, the contribution for this upcoming year will be $17.8 million, and I believe they're nearing the 92% funding level, which is very, very impressive for a municipal entity. They have currently, are 1,572 positions funded, and they're going to be adding 38 new positions. The median home price, this is all from the budget summary, back in 2020 was $795,000. By comparison, in December of 2021, $935,000 in Orange County. Now it's well over $1 million, so you can see where the property taxes are coming from. The question is, what's around the corner? When will the recession come? It will come, the question is when. But they're being very conservative in their approaches and trying to protect the revenues and at the same time provide world-class fire and emergency medical services. On that note, I'd like to also mention that the Orange County Grand Jury, in course of their duties, did a review of emergency medical, of their emergency medical services program, and they had some recommendations that the staff is currently digesting, but there were some criticisms and I think some points that they're going to work on, and I look forward to reporting back later. Chief, did you have anything on that, or is that something that staff is still kind of going over?
We're still reviewing it to see how we can implement some of the changes in its operation.
Okay. We'll report back on that maybe next month. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next up is Orange County Library Advisory Board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Executive Committee meeting on April 28th. We sort of did a high-level budget review similar to what we did here in Villa Park with the city council. We do have another board meeting, a full board meeting, this coming Thursday to finalize the budget and also vote on it. So I'll report back when we finish that.
Excellent. Thank you. For Orange Unified School District City Schools Committee, we had a meeting on May 16th, which was also our budget session. That was up at Canyon High School. They did a tour of the new science center up there. It's a little sad I missed it, but may see if I can sneak back over there and get one of the people at OUSD to give me a tour at some point, because it's, I think, great how, all the work they're doing to get the science centers up at all of our high schools. They did do a presentation on the E S S E R project. The presentation I will go look at, and I will see if I can provide a report back on that, but, and I have not looked at that yet, so that's the one I didn't see. They also, Anaheim's Project Say, which is Support Anaheim's Youth, did a presentation. That was Jose Perez, who's the Human Services Manager up there. That I actually, they've given a presentation previously, and I was interested to see what the updates were. They provided a brief history of that program, which is where the counselors from Project Say work with at-risk youth on peer pressure, mental health, negative influences. Really valuable program that they've expanded throughout their schools and seems really worthwhile. It complements stuff that we've looked at for mental health over at Saravilla and implementing there, and I think that's one of those things that, in today's day and age, having programs that support our youth in schools is incredibly important. So that completes my report on city schools. They'll be dark for the next couple of months as we hit graduation for all four of our schools coming up, so congratulations to all the graduates, and looking forward to some cool graduation ceremonies myself. Next up is Law and Enforcement Advisory.
No meeting.
And then Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
Thanks. So we meet the day after city council meetings, so the last meeting we had was April 27th, and there's actually a lot of stuff that we went over. Let's see. First, the Halloween Fest was discussed in detail, and along with that, we kind of got a history lesson for those newer members on the board, that how the Halloween Fest started and who started it. And actually, Julia Peterson is a well-known name in Villa Park, and she actually chaired it for 15 years, I want to say, her and, you know, her cohort of incredible, amazing volunteers. So unfortunately, she's going through some difficult experiences right now, and it was suggested that, to honor her, that the foundation create sort of a Halloween fund, almost like a scholarship, and it would be called, or like a grant, that would be in her name, that would be called the Julia Peterson Student Volunteer Service Award, and it would go to an individual that volunteered at the Halloween Fest in preparation, setting up, and would be given out by the committee, the foundation committee, and the whole entire group liked that a lot in recognition of all the years and selfless giving and time and energy and effort and her personal giving of this specific event. So everyone really liked that, so that's going to become an annual tradition coming this Halloween Fest. And, let's see, Earth Day donations that they had, remember Earth Day was back in April, that amounted to $138. The July 4th parade, and then a few days later, the July 8th concert in the park. Support for both is needed, so if you're interested in volunteering or need any kind of NLYM or any other kind of hours, to let Forest, who's their event organizer, or contact me and I'll let you know, let them know, excuse me. And then membership information, that there are now 108 members, which I did not, I failed to ask how many there were last year, but I do believe that is up from what it was last year. And then the Pancake Breakfast was the 30th, and I was unable to attend, I was in New York, but they were getting ready for that, so I'm sure tomorrow we will have an update on how well that went, but maybe one of you that were attended can comment on that. And then there, tonight in the consent calendar, there is a new member that we are voting on, Eric Kuli, or Mark Kuli, sorry, and that was given a unanimous support to bring to the council for us to vote on this evening, and that's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next up is Housing Legislative Committee.
No meeting.
And then Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory.
No meeting.
And Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
So it's transition time. Okay, so, and again, on Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, there's the regular Senior Citizens Advisory Committee or Council, and then there's a subcommittee that I'm on, which is Well Being Reimagined. So Well Being Reimagined met on May 18th, and the regular Senior Citizens Advisory Committee met on May 13th, both focusing around a Mental Health Awareness Month along with Older Americans Month. So for the Well Being Reimagined, it was discussing homelessness, and we had a presentation by an individual who is the homeless coordinator for Newport Beach, and a lot of it was information that I was already familiar with, discussing about North Spa and whatnot, being that I sit on the Bridges of Kramer. So this individual went over a lot of what the North Spa is or service provider area. So our county is divided into different service provider areas. We are part of a North Spa. And the determination of what factors people need to meet and criteria, kind of similar to what the captain was discussing in his workshop that he commented on, and how to prevent that, you know, cycle of the need and then fulfilling the need, and then they get released, and, you know, the mental health aspect from that as well. And then, but again, remember, a lot of it is primarily focused on older Americans because it is a Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, so a lot of discussion around vets and individuals that suddenly find themselves widowed or have an ailment that causes them to no longer be able to provide for themselves. So different than, say, at Bridges at Kramer, we talk a lot about some of the individuals that might be, you know, considered, you know, 20 to 45 or 55, something like that. And then the regular Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, which focused around kind of the proclamation that we did, and talking about, this is Older Americans Month, it was discussed with elder abuse. And elder abuse is a crime and includes physical, emotional, sexual, and financial abuse and neglect. And last year, over 10,000 abuse reports were investigated by the Adult Protective Services, which is an increase of 19% from 2014. So I don't know if it's COVID, I don't know, probably a lot of it is COVID, but that sudden sharp increase is very concerning. And the 65-plus population is the fastest-growing age group in Orange County. Nationally, it is estimated that 5 million or 1 in 10 seniors are victims of elder abuse annually with an economic cost of over $30 billion. So, and then from that, experts believe that for every case reported, there are 20 cases that go unreported. So where can someone go for help? And we'll put this up on the website. If you suspect someone is being abused or neglected, there are Adult Protective Services, and these numbers you can access, we'll put out the link. And then Long-Term Care Ombudsman Office, and they investigate abuse in residential facilities like nursing facilities and board and care homes. And then a lot of people ask, what can I do to help? And so either by joining some sort of volunteer program, you can go on the Orange County office on Aging website, and there's a lot of opportunities there, but a lot of seniors don't realize how many resources there are for them to be able to make sure that they aren't victims of elder abuse, and they have to learn how to protect themselves and others. So I just put together a couple little bullet points, and the first one is prepare. So to help make sure that elders are not being abused or taken advantage of is you need to get your state plan in place, talk with an attorney about helping you create one, perhaps a living will, a revocable trust, durable power of attorney for healthcare and/or asset management, and name a person you trust to make healthcare and asset management decisions for you if you are incapable. And then be aware, learn about the types of elder abuse and neglect associated and the warning signs. Learn about the current frauds and scams, and I know we've talked about that a lot, whenever you go on or see somebody that sends you a link, if it doesn't have the HTTPS with that S for safe, then don't click it, don't open it. And a lot of seniors, they see that, and they click on it, and then they end up inserting a virus in their device, and it gets all of their personal information. If you have a If you have a family member that is in a care facility or has an in-home caregiver, check on them frequently and be involved. And then, protect yourself. So, get on the National Do Not Call Registry. If you're offered a prize or a loan or investment that sounds too good to be true, it probably is. So, you should never have to pay for a free prize either. So, a lot of the seniors will get this, just give me 20 bucks and then you'll get this in the mail later, and that should, that's never gonna, that's not, it's not gonna work out. And then, consult with someone you trust before making a large purchase or an investment. Don't be pressured or intimidated into immediate decisions. Always consult with someone that you know, whether it's a family member or a neighbor or, you know, a colleague, something. And never provide personal information, like your social security number or credit card, unless you placed the call and you know who you're speaking with. Also, for the seniors, anytime, you know, tear up those expired credit cards or cut them up and shred receipts and expired or used checks. And then, keep in touch with others because isolation can make you more vulnerable. Get caller ID on your phone and only pick up if you recognize the call. And for our seniors, it's really hard because isolation is such the big motivating factor for them to try and not be alone. So, when they see somebody call, they pick up the phone, and they have to realize, you know, let it go to voicemail. If it's somebody that's really wanting to talk to you because they're your friend or concerned about you, they'll leave a message and you can call back. But when you're a senior and you're isolated and you're alone, you see that as an opportunity to be able to reach out and speak with somebody. So, that's hard. And then, don't give in to family members, this is a big one too, because a lot of times these family members will come out of the woodworks. And don't give in to family members who are asking for financial assistance that you can't provide. And then, always get help if the individual becomes threatening. And this June 15th, there is a Zoom, and it's called Resiliency in Aging, and it's featuring two well-respected individuals in the geriatric community. And one is Dr. Michelle Park, and she'll be talking on building resiliency and overcoming ageism. And then, Daniel York, who's an attorney, to talk about financial resilience, common sense planning is the best defense. And this will be on the website too, and there's a Zoom, you just click on it and register, and you can just listen, you don't have to say anything, doesn't cost you anything. But I recommend any of our seniors that just want to get some more information to learn about it and get some information that they may not have had before.
Crystal, thanks so much for all of that. That was fantastic. Appreciate it. We're now at public comments. At this time, we'll review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, is there anyone that's present or wrote in from the public that would like to comment at this time?
Yes, we do. But does, before we start, I do want to add up of real quick announcements. Two new faces in City Hall. Lee Xiao, who's sitting over here, is our new Finance Director. She started yesterday, so she's going to be a little overlap with Jim Gorzo, but she'll be around if people want to come in. And then, Ashley Houston is our new intern, just graduated from college, so she's joined us as well. So, I just wanted to announce those.
Thank you. Welcome me both.
So, we have three speaker forums, and I have one speaker that will speak on an agendized item.
Thank you.
So, Barbara Doty? Okay, thank you.
Can I approach with a handout, please?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. To the Villa Park City, I want to read a letter. To the Villa Park City Council and Planning Department. I've been a Villa Park resident since 1990, for 32 years, and live near the Wanda Green Strip. Although I scrutinized photos of the plans for the revitalization of the area and noted the cute orange crate-type signage, in none of those plans was a wrought iron vine-covered gate evident or discussed. Regardless, such a fence was installed last week, and per the city manager, on Thursday, May 19th, it is going to be covered by a lovely vine, which the city of Villa Park intends to maintain. With said fence standing variably 1 to 12 inches from the existing fence, it will be challenging to maintain control of the vine, especially in the space between the two fences. Rats are a problem in Villa Park, even to the extent that in 2017, classrooms at Villa Park Elementary, which is a few blocks from the new fence location, were evacuated when rodent mites were biting staff and students. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District was called in to assist in resolving the issue at the time. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District defines public nuisance as "any property excluding water that has been artificially altered from its natural condition so that it now supports the development, attraction, and harborage of vectors." And vectors as "any animal capable of transmitting the causative agent of human disease or capable of producing human discomfort or injury, including but not limited to mosquitoes, flies, mites, ticks, other arthropods, rodents, and other vertebrates." Attached, I send you a handout regarding the most common human disease carried by rat fleas in Orange County, Fleaborn Typhus. Another handout regards protecting our homes and families from rats, and includes recommendations for removing dense shrubbery. The city manager, no, no, no. The third is particularly pertinent to the proposed landscaping as represented by the Villa Park City Manager, and lists plants which should be avoided because they provide habitat for rats, opossums, and other flea carriers, particularly these vines, ivy, boganvia, Cape honeysuckle, and creeping fig. All handouts were prepared by the Orange County Mosquito, Vector, and Control District. I would like it noted that I consider the new fence planting in the Villa Park Knowles to be a public nuisance and potential health hazard. Please reconsider before city funds are wasted on purchasing, planting, and watering the proposed rat hostel and breeding area. Respectfully, Barbara Doty, Doctor of Veterinary Medicine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Kathy Tracy.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council and Staff. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to tell you, I was very delighted to see Churchill and Squire and Dodson on the budget. I checked the budget papers and the stuff, and the staff was lovely to give me a copy. So, I wanted to say thank you so much. In July, I'm due to have a total hip replacement, so I'm going to be walking on that street. So, I wanted to know, when does this, the process happen and everything like that? I'm just kind of curious. Does anybody know when that begins for the 2223 budget?
Mayor, would you like me to?
Sure, please.
So, the project has already been approved, so it's in design. The design will be done probably in June, a lot of part of June, and that design is not what we think of drawing something, it's going through and evaluating the height and width, et cetera, of the streets, et cetera, and taking exact measurements and then working with utilities companies. That will be done later this June. We expect to go out to bid in early July and come back to the council in August to award the bid, and work will start shortly thereafter, once the contractor is able to provide insurance and mobilize.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. I won't be able to do my usual Pilates, so walking is going to be my physical therapy for a while. So, thank you so much. I just really appreciate your time and that you guys have given me since last year, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Councilman Pitts has submitted a.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor of City Council, I think we're all aware of all the current happenings in Anaheim surrounding the mayor and others along with our city. I felt in the name of transparency, I wanted to speak tonight to everyone about recent events that have taken place this month around all of us. What has transpired in Anaheim is shedding light on many cities and any type of proprietary that takes place. We, as members of the City Council of Villa Park, sit at this dais every month and vote on laws that impact all of us in the city, and we also vow to uphold the rule of law in our positions. One of the most sacred rules for us to follow is the safety of our citizens. And when something happens to impact that safety, we should absolutely take actions that are appropriate. The last thing we want to hear from our constituents is, what if government officials have written laws that apply only to us and not to them? What if we gave them the power to protect our freedoms, and what if our government officials broke the laws we hired them to enforce? What if they prosecuted others for breaking the same laws they broke? Where are we as a community? Councilman Callicott, I've been recently contacted by many of our constituents that have concerns about recent events that took place at your home and where the sheriff had to be called a number of times. I personally am not privy to all the details of the event, but until this matter is resolved, I do not believe that you should be representing the city or the people of Villa Park until a satisfactory conclusion or resolution of the matters by all parties. I sent you a note this week that, in my opinion, and many of the constituents, that you step aside from your duties until the issue is resolved and the public trust can be reinstated. But your presence tonight, you're giving all of us the middle finger, and we'll go without me bringing it up to everyone's attention. If you violated the trust of the people and violated your oath of office, you should have consequences just as you're seeing unfold in Anaheim. I do, by the way, have a copy of the criminal complaint against you that has been provided by one of the constituents in this city. I also believe that you should not be executing the office of the city councilperson, and you should excuse yourself and exit this building immediately, discontinuing representation of the constituents of this city and the business of this city until such time this potentially serious matter of safety can be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your concern. This involves a.
I don't believe we addressed public comment, do we? I believe you should leave the building.
So, at this time, we don't have any other blue cards, but.
No, sir.
It is public comment, so if there are any other additional public comments, that this is the time for it.
So, Mayor, under the Brown Act, people are generally allowed to provide limited responses to statements made in public comment, so at the mayor's discretion or under councilmember comments, they also have the opportunity to express themselves, either way.
That's correct. So, as I'm stating, it is public comment at this point if anybody else had anything to say.
Okay. Again, thank you for your concern. What happened, I actually called the Orange County Sheriff myself for self-protection. It involved a family member with that, with a substance abuse problem, and we're working through that. But thank you for your concern.
So, we've had public comment and response, so we should move on.
Can I make one?
Please.
The only thing I want to say is, in Councilman Pitts' comments, he said he feels like Councilman Callicott is giving everyone the middle finger, and I do not fall under that comment. So, I do not wish Councilman Pitts to speak for me. Thank you.
Moving on to our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is the review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you. This is, item number two, is a waived reading that we do every month that allows for an expeditious and efficient city council meeting, we would recommend approval.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff?
So moved.
Okay. We asked for a public comment on this as well, right?
Yes.
So, at this time, we have public comment on that. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay. Thank you, councilmembers. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Could we please record votes? Did I catch off guard a little?
There you go. That passes by a 5-0 vote.
Thanks, Steve. Our next hearing is the second reading of ordinance 2022-625 pertaining to the regulation of unmanned aircraft systems. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, you recall, the second reading of the ordinance pertaining to, commonly referred to as drones. It was, first reading was heard in our last council meeting in April. This would be the second one, there have been no changes or amendments to that as a result of that reading and subsequent actions by anybody. So, and we have received no public input. So, with that, I would recommend approval as presented to the city council in our April meeting, and the language is included in the agenda.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Is there anyone here to speak on, at this hearing? If so, please step to the podium. Steve, anybody that wrote in on this?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, is there any discussion regarding this matter?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Can we please vote?
That passes by a 5-0, so that will take effect 30 days from the date of approval tonight. So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Our next hearing is the introduction of ordinance 2022-626, adding Article 9-3 electric vehicle charging stations to the Villa Park Municipal Code. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. AB 1236 requires all California cities and counties to develop an expedited streamlined permitting process for electronic, electric vehicle charging stations, EVCS. The law was developed to further availability of charging infrastructure to help drive the deployment of zero-emission vehicles. The faster charging stations are deployed, the sooner California air quality improves as the logic greenhouse gas emissions are reduced, et cetera. Pursuant to AB 1236, cities and counties must adopt a streamlining ordinance and checklist. So, that is what is attached, is this the first reading. Ordnance 2022-626 reflects the first reading with that checklist that's set forth and required as part of AB 1236. This references both public and private charging stations, so it's if somebody's charging at their house versus public installation of public charging stations. So, with that, we would recommend approval. This is the first reading, the second meeting would be, the second reading would be as our regularly scheduled council meeting in June.
Thanks, Steve. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for staff? Opening to public, is there any public comment on this? No. Okay, councilmembers, any discussion, further discussion? Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Can we vote?
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
Thanks, Steve. And our last hearing is variance number 2022-04 at 9571 Lemon Street. I'd like, I'll now open the hearing. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you, sorry. Sorry to jump out there. This is variance 22-04, has a number of elements to it. Ray Pasquale, our planning manager, is here to make a presentation. And I believe the applicant is in the audience as well, just for reference.
Thank you. Ray?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The variance request involves 9571 Lemon Street in the E4 zoning district. The variance request is to deviate from the minimum side yard building setback for a proposed solid roof patio cover and an existing gazebo and an existing storage shed. As provided in the staff report, the property owner purchased the property about seven years ago, and at that time, it included a smaller solid roof patio cover as well as the other structures that I mentioned that I'll cover in a moment. Recently, the property owner demolished the existing solid roof patio cover and then poured the footings for the larger solid roof patio cover in the same location of the property, which is behind the residence and between the swimming pool and the south property line. The footings were poured approximately five feet from the side property line, which the property owner later explained. property owner later explained was where the existing support posts were for the previous solid roof patio cover. City staff later explained to the property owner that the minimum side yard building setback for a detached accessory structure like a patio cover is 10 feet, which prompted the subsequent filing of this variance application that's before you this evening. Relative to the gazebo and the storage shed, these existing structures were noticed by city staff on a onsite visit of the property. Again, the property owner noted that these structures preexisted when the property was purchased. As it exists, the gazebo is set back approximately three feet from the north property line, and the minimum side yard setback for this structure is 10 feet. The storage shed, which is less than 100 square feet in size and appeared to be taller than six feet, is located up against the south property line, about opposite of the gazebo. Pursuant to the city's zoning ordinance, storage sheds are considered small structures and is required to be set back three feet from the side property line if it exceeds six feet, which this does. Generally, variance requests can be approved if there are inherent and inherent land features unique to the property that precludes compliance with development standards for projects like a room addition and patio covers. In the case of this property, it does have an unconventional shape compared to other lots in the immediate vicinity. It has about 100 feet of street frontage along Lemon Street, then it tapers down to about 73 feet along the rear property line. The property is particularly deep and disproportionately narrow. Along the north portion of the property, there is an immediate grade change from Lemon Street down to the building pad of the existing residence and the attached three-car garage. So, there are topographic conditions on the property. Additionally, the property includes a five-foot-wide equestrian easement along the full width of the street frontage for this property and a 10-foot-wide sanitary sewer easement that traverses the rear portion of this property. And that's depicted in Exhibit L of your staff report for your reference. These physical traits set the property apart from most of the properties in the vicinity. So, for this application, this variance application, public hearing notices were mailed out to the most current property owners within 300 feet of this property 10 calendar days before this meeting. To date, the property owners submitted to staff three letters of support from adjacent property owners, and they are included as exhibits in your staff report. I also prepared a location map that shows where these support letters came from. And staff has not received any other comments for or against this item. And that concludes my staff report. And as Steve mentioned, Mr. John Valentine is present this evening and available for any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Questions? If anybody wants to speak about this at this time, this is the opportunity. No speaker cards. Do we have any other councilmember discussion on this matter? I'll just say, I know several of us have visited the property, and I think that the layout and the designs, the variances are reasonable, and I think I just want to state that I'm in favor of our residents who are trying to improve their properties and also have the approval of their neighbors and have reached out and talked to the surrounding community about stuff, as Valentines have, and have gotten letters of endorsement from their neighbors. So, just wanted to say thank you for being a good community member and doing that. Anybody else with any comment?
Yeah, I would like to also say thank you because I know that there was the existing shed and the gazebo. Both were structures that were there prior to the purchase of the home, so I appreciate that they have been included in this variance. And I think that shows, you know, Mr. Valentine dotting his i's and crossing his t's, and that's definitely helpful and sets a good precedent. And again, I'm always strongly supportive of variances where the neighbors are the ones that have to live with this. So, if there's support from the neighbors, that's always a good, that's always a good sign for me. That was it. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if there's nothing?
Yeah, nothing else?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? If we could vote? Steve, could you read the results?
That passes by a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
We are now moving on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and usually enacted by one motion. Approving the recommended action listed on the agenda, any member of the City Council staff or public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Councilmembers, are there any items from 6 to 12 that you'd like to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve all these?
Yes.
I'll also move it. Anybody?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second? If we could vote?
Passes by a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now take, oh, actually, we'll move on to new business. Our first item of new business is the approval of the investment policy update. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. The California Government Code requires each city to submit a statement of investment policy to its legislative body. This last, the city of Villa Park has complied with that over the years. It was originally adopted in 1996. The last streamlining process was, or revisions were done in 2017. So, at this point, the Villa Park Investor Advisory Committee has taken on this task of going through and modernizing, I guess is the best word to say, our investment policy. It's a considerable amount of effort, and Lynn Doty, the chair of the committee, and Bill Underwood are both significantly involved, and they're both here to answer questions. We can go, they can go into very definite detail if you want, or we can talk to it. I do believe it's a much improved version personally. They've been able to bring it down to the modern terms, and also, they've been able to remove a lot of excess verbiage that was in there in the past. But I will let, Bill Underwood wanted to speak, and I believe Lynn Doty is here, the chair of the Investment Advisory Committee, that would be more than happy to answer questions or speak if you so desired.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff on this? Do we have a public comment on this?
Bill had wanted to speak.
Please. Mr. Underwood.
I'm Bill Underwood. I've been in Villa Park 41 years, and I'm your city treasurer. I've never appeared in front of you in that role before, so I thought I'd come in and talk. Because I was not significantly involved in the rewrite and simplification of this statement this time, not per intent, but there was electronic mix-up that I did not attend the last meeting where they finally approved this, so I wanted to go on record with that. It was a glitch, or it was the first time in a decade that I missed a meeting. So, not being on record, I wanted to say that I really approve the way they've simplified the investment policy statement this time. I think it's a much more readable document, at least for the main body of it. I also wanted to offer up to at least three of you, because I don't think we ever indoctrinated or briefed you on the...
Freudian slip.
On the pension, pre-pension funding that's, I believe, in Appendix C perhaps, or A. And I'm willing to do that for any of you one-on-one to talk about it, because the rules for the pension, pre-pension funding are quite loose. The state did that purposely. The rules for city investment funds are quite tight, and we're only limited to certain types of things. So, they have different reasons for that. As a result, there, the statement covers both of them. It separates them with that appendix, but you need to understand the pre-pension funding part. It's a small part, and you approve $100,000 to go in that annually, and I think we, that's in the budget this year, is it not, Steve? Another $100,000. So, it's got about $500,000 by the time that amount gets in to get the percent of unfunded pensions to get at the right level, but it gives us, gives the city flexibility to invest funds and let them grow at a greater rate than we could at our current city funding, which we're getting about 1% and 2% if you read the reports on that for that investments, whereas, and we can also lose a little bit more on pre-pension funding. So, one of the rules for pre-pension funding is you must have a financial advising firm, and we have that in pars, and none of, none of the things that are investing right now are doing very well, probably including your investments, but over the long term, we've got a pretty good record, and we plan to have that as well. So, number one, I approve, I think it's a good job that Lynn has done, and Joe McCarthy and the rest of the committee that put into this one. So, I firmly endorse it as your city treasurer, and then I'll go sit down.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, your endorsement. It does mean a lot.
Like his shoes, too.
Councilmembers, do we have any other discussion on this? Oh, please.
Just gonna say, does Lynn want to say something?
Yeah.
May I clarify? Bill has led this committee for a long time, and over the many years, the City Council has very firmly established an investment policy, which we have not changed. Simply that we would keep, that you would approve a policy that ensures that the money is kept safe, number one, and that it's available when you had planned to spend it, liquidity, number two, and third, that we look at yield. And this revision was really only of that main overriding investment policy. Appendix C is regarding pension plan money, you know, pre-funding the pension plans, and is a little different than the main policy, but can be revised at your will whenever you want to. So, this was not a change in policy, but merely a change in the document.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it. Okay. So, at this point, we're looking for a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion? I'll second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? If we could take a vote?
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
Thank you, Steve. Next item of new business is the NV5 Engineering Contract Amendment.
Okay. Excuse me, I'll need to recuse myself because I have an employment conflict.
Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. This item is continued from our April meeting, as you're aware, because we did not have all members present, we wanted to be able to have, make sure that all members were able to vote on this. NV5, as you're well aware, provides our engineering contract services. They've been under contract with us since 2016. It was originally, it was a flat rate until 2019, where we provided an additional assistant engineer not to exceed eight hours a week. We still have that. In April 2020, the contract was extended an additional year under the existing scope of services. So, in, up through that entire time, from 2016 through 2021, the city, I'm sorry, the NV5 was not, did not raise our rates, they maintained a flat rate. In July, they came forward and they asked for a one-year extension. In doing so, I told them that I wanted the contract, I wanted to have something, and they basically agreed we'd extend it. They did ask for a slight increase of rate. And so, in August, we came back with a three-year extension agreement, and that negotiated rate was maintained with a flat amount the first year. There was a 2% increase the second and a 4% increase in the third year of the contract. We're currently in the second year, just about ending the second year of the contract, the first year of the contract. So, we then, just this spring, we had the city engineer, Akram, you'll recall, retired, and the NV5 provided seamless service. I would say they had an engineer here right away, and we were able to continue providing services to the residents, contractors, developers, in the city without, with no problem. And they continued to do so, and then we had a transition where he moved on, and one of the issues, he said, was it was the rates that we had built in were just, with the cost of living was just simply killing him. Inflation was driving, was very difficult. So, you recall, we had a 2% increase and a 4% increase the third and final year of the contract. In discussing with him, we played around with it a little bit and went back and forth, and he said, you know, if you could give me a six-point, basically a little over 6.8, roughly 6.9% increase effective in this year, he would waive the 4% next year. So, we wanted to front-load the contract, basically. So, in other words, move the 4% forward. We already were giving him 2% in July, but moved it forward with a slight adjustment for CPI, and he would not have any increase in the third year. So, we basically walked forward. This is something that I think they've been a very good partner with us. They provide quality engineering services. I'm really appreciative and comparative. I believe that we are getting contracted rates that are less than other cities are experiencing for their city engineer. And secondly, I think they, over the course of the first six years, they, or five years, I guess it was, five years, they did not provide any rate increases at all. So, I think they were very good partners, and even during COVID, we had complete access to an engineer on, you know, onsite or in meetings or whatever we needed to without a problem. So, I really understand with the inflation rate that is hitting all of us, I think it's a very fair, and he was just, in order to bring the quality of engineers that I believe the city Villa Park deserves, he wanted to be able to pay and increase their rate a little bit on the front end. So, with that, he's, we're recommending the amendment to the agreement, which would be reflecting a increase of 6.9% starting in July 1st, and the rate will remain in flat for the entirety of the contract, which would end in June 30th of 2024. So, basically, two years of the rate increase that we're proposing now, with no rate increase that we previously had. This agreement would remain in effect, and I believe it's in the best interests of Villa Park residents and staff, et cetera, to have the continuity and continue on with this direction. So, with that, I'd recommend approval, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have questions of staff? No? Is there anyone that, present who wanted to comment on this in public?
No.
No? Any public comments? Step to the podium. Okay. Do I have a motion, or is there further discussion?
I'd be happy to move it. It's a very fair offer, considering the services provided and the lack of raise for that first five-year period of time and moving forward.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I have a second. Unless you want to.
No, that's fine. So, we have a motion and a second? If we could take a vote?
So, that passes on a 3-1 vote, with Councilman Pitts voting no, and Councilman Colacott abstaining or being absent. Abstaining, I guess.
Okay. Our la, oh, yeah.
These are advanced.
Our last item of new business is the approval of the fiscal year 2022-23 recommended level of service with the Orange County Sheriff Coroner. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. As you recall, we are in a multi-year agreement with the sheriff, but part of that multi-year agreement requires that they come back each year with a proposed dollar amount for the subsequent year. The services for the sheriff, we've contracted since 1962. We've received excellent services, and very candidly, we have one of the safest cities in Orange County, and the services we have are excellent and we're very proud of the police protection services that we have. The law enforcement contract is a major expenditure in our budget. We, they, in this past year, we've done a little bit of an amendment. You'll recall, we added a part-time motorcycle officer, and through the efforts of the captain across from me, we were able to come up with something that we didn't have to buy a motorcycle ourselves, and we didn't have to, which some of the expenses that other cities would have to do, we were able to afford this in a way that helped us, and it lived within our budget. So, they were very much working with us and trying to improve our traffic support. This agreement for next year continues the level of service inclusive of that traffic motorcycle. So, again, if any residents are watching, I would not speed or violate laws. You're going to get pulled over at some point. But anyway, that side note, the agreement basically increases to $1.9 million. It's a three... It's a 3.55% increase over the current contract amount, given our inflationary rate that we're seeing out there of seven plus, you know, rising every day I watch it. I think we're getting a very fair deal, and this is includes, all-inclusive of the current level of services, which includes deputies, investigations, SWAT, helicopter, everything else, the full array of sheriff vehicles and support. So I would recommend approval, this will cover the contract starting July 1st through June 30th of next year. And again, I strongly recommend this contract, we're very, very, very fortunate to have the sheriff providing law enforcement here, and the level of service that we're getting, I know they work very well with us in, in every capacity requested.
And just to clarify, I think you pulled away, it's a 3.55% increase?
Increase, yes, sir.
Thank you. In terms of the, the motorcycle officer that we have, is there a possibility for us to get more time from that officer, and would that be beneficial?
It is, but I think that we want to, we were, we were hoping that we would see how, you know, minimum bang for, or maximum gain for a minimum buck. It is an expensive endeavor, and I think if we start doing that right now, we're tagging on to another city, and we're basically using the extra time of another city. I don't want to really go to another city and say, hey, we want more hours from you, I think that, that we're getting the effect we want. I think the number of citations and things we're going to be seeing out there is, is improved, and I think you're going to see compliance. So I think we're going to get what we want, and I think we have the ability to, to do that, but it's going to be more cost per hour than we've been paying up to date. I think that's a fair statement, Captain, wouldn't it be? Because right now, we're relying on, I don't even know what city he comes from, but we're getting somebody from under the city who comes in and fills gaps on hours, so we're very fortunate.
Thanks for the explanation, appreciate that. Council members, are there any other questions? Okay, is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on this matter, or has something? Please step to the podium, any cards on that?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, could I just say something brief, really more for the public's certification?
Sure.
If you wish. Under state law, the, since we as a city contract with a county agency for police services, they are limited to charging us the cost of the service they provide. So, I mean, often people say, oh, the sheriff's contract is high, or why are we paying? I mean, they do not make profit or make money off of the city. The way the city can control costs is the amount of services we request, like you were just discussed, discussing about the motor, so really more for the public, I know the council knows that, so.
Thank you, it's helpful.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Do you approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. We could vote.
That passes by a five zero vote, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We are now moving on to the city manager's report, city manager's report, wow, that didn't come out of my mouth right. Steve, if you would, please.
Thank you. I, just a couple things, highlights, Nick, in June, you'll be seeing the budget for the coming year will be adopted, we've had two budget workshops, so you'll see in our June meeting, the, the formal adoption of our budget for next fiscal year. You will also see in June, the most recent and our current, and our planned submittal to address all the housing element updates requirements, so we will be getting that to you. The, there are a number of elements that we've had to add to it, by equity elements, et cetera, that HCD is requiring. So in this plan, we'll have a formal adoption for it planned in June, and we'll submit that to the state, and again, to, on an effort to maintain compliance with the laws of, of that. So we've been working on that, and as far as the Knowles, Villa Park Knowles, the city, we're planning to send out a, I think if we haven't sent it out yet, but I think we're planning on sending out a save the date for mid-June, that we will do an official ribbon-cutting. It is just about done, you will start seeing the plaques being put up very soon. The greenery and the shrubbery, a lot of it is out there now that you can see, you've all received some emails, some supportive emails, some, the residents are very pleased with that. It's got a DG walking trail, decomposed granite walking trail, and a cement area on the sidewalk, for those who prefer, but it'll be a very nice addition to the entrance point of Villa Park. So that's going to be done mid-June, so if you want to look forward on your feeder as a resident, or we'll be sending something out there, we'll go out there and do a thing. Mike tells me he's going to be on vacation, whenever it is, he hasn't given an idea when his vacations were. We're playing a cat and mouse about who's going to be, when we're going to have it, and when he's going to be in town.
And you have to get him.
So anyway, I appreciate all your, your support in that. Again, we were also able to secure additional state funding, so remember, we had an amendment to add some cost to that contract. We were able to secure state funding to cover that additional cost, so there was no general fund expense related to that increase, for those residents who were so inquiring. So it's been a very successful project. Delays are really related to delivery of product, and as you are know, if any of you have dealt with construction material, or almost any product at this point, it's a challenge to get things done, to get, to get them very quickly. I think that's the main points I wanted to share with you, so look forward to the June meeting for a number, numbers of significant items, and before that, we'll have a nice chance to celebrate. And as somebody pointed out, this will be the first almost park we have in Villa Park.
First park of Villa Park, excellent.
Kind of nice to be able to have something there.
It's very difficult to plan a surprise party in public, but can we, like, mislead the date that we're going to have that for some people, and then make sure that
Mike hears everything and sees everything. I think any resident, you just, it's hard to do that with Mike, but he, he's promised to not be too far on vacation, so I know how to track him down.
Excellent, excellent. Just for everybody else that doesn't know, Mike Knowles, who we're honoring with the Knowles of Villa Park, is traditionally very shy, and does not seek public recognition for these things, and doesn't want to be recognized, despite all the work that he does for our city, and how much we appreciate him, so that's what the banter is about, just in case anybody didn't know. Thanks, Steve, does council members have any questions? No? Okay, thank you for the report. Moving on to mayor and council member matters, now is the time for us to discuss individual information items, starting with Councilman Colacott.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Miles?
Oh, just want to wish the Villa Park High School baseball team good luck, so they had, you know, they, they moved into D1, Division One this year, and it's been really fun to watch them, they, for the first time in 20 years, made it all the way through to the semifinals, and unfortunately, lost that semifinal game. However, the four top teams from Southern Section CIF, in Southern California, Villa Park being one of them, Villa Park Huntington Beach Jay Sarah, and Sherman Oaks Notre Dame, all qualified to go on to state regionals for CIF, so the brackets come out on Sunday, the 29th, and we will find out if we are playing in Fresno or in San Diego, hopefully it's San Diego, and then who we're playing as well. So there is a possibility that although we lost the CIF final, there is a possibility that they could end up winning state, which would be fantastic, but nonetheless, this team has really melded and, and grown, and then most of the team is made up of juniors with just a few seniors, so the next year should be equally as entertaining and thrilling to watch. I think there was close to 1,000 people that came to the semifinal game last Tuesday, it was standing room only, and much to the school's chagrin, there were people up on top of buildings, students, to be able to watch, because you couldn't fit anybody any out, any, anymore. But, so just wanted to wish them good luck, and, and, you know, so proud of, of the whole team and program, and yes, I'm a mom in the program, but the way the, the players have handled all of this has been phenomenal. And then also, kind of back to the mental health awareness, unfortunately, there was a tragedy for a dear friend of, of mine, and, and I know we all talk about, you know, mental health awareness, what it means, but sometimes, you, you just, you just need to realize that people you, you think are okay, might not be, and so, asking a couple questions every now and then, or sending them a text, you know, could be helpful. So really, make sure you check on people, because it, the effects are devastating otherwise, so just wanted to make sure people realize that even though if you don't feel like you have anybody out there, you really do, so hopefully that, that plays in someone's mind who might be having a mental health crisis. That's it.
Thank you. Eppertam? Councilmember?
I was busy. On April 28th, I attended the Taste of Orange, it was a great event, great food. We had an opportunity to rub elbows with several other city council members from other, other cities, so it was a great event, well done. On May 5th and 6th, I attended the SCAG event in Palm Springs, I believe each one of you got copies of the trip report.
Thank you. Yeah.
And I meant to say something to Pat, because we did take a picture of all the Orange County representatives that were there, but didn't get a copy of it, but it was a good meeting. Some things I agree with, some things I didn't, I think they had several speakers there that came from Washington DC trying to sell the Build Back Better Plan, and things of that nature, so that was interesting in itself. May 7th, I was invited by the Orange Chamber of Commerce and the Orange City Council to attend their May parade, probably one of the longest parades I've ever sat through in my entire life. But it was fun, and I have to say, our Villa Park Martian Spartans did us proud. I mean, they closed out that parade in fine style, and I stood on the street corner and clapped the whole time they, they came by, so again, great job, guys and gals, and really appreciate what you did, so. And then I have, had a board meeting with the library board this past month, and I have another one coming up tomorrow.
Excellent, thanks, sir. So I was not at the meeting last month, so I wanted to start off by thanking Mayor Protem Rosini for handling that, that meeting quite well, as you have the experience, and did a fantastic job, on short notice, too, so very much appreciate it. So I didn't get to announce last month that April 21st, we had three different classes, the whole grade of, the whole third grade from Villa Park Elementary got to come visit City Hall and do a tour, they broke it up into three different sections, and I got to sit with each of the sections and talk about what goes on in City Hall. They got a tour through, got even to see in the, the back, and then sit in the, the council chambers, there were some kids that were sitting in your chairs, by the way. I allowed that. But they, they all were, were really happy, and it was such a great exposure for them to see what government and local representation looks like. So they all provided thank you notes, I will actually, I took those with me, and I meant to bring them in, but I'm going to put them back in my drawer, if any of you wants to go through and see them, they did a great job of getting thank you notes back, which I always appreciate. April 30th was a big day over at Villa Park High School, did, started with the pancake breakfast, there were a large number of Rotarians who helped to cook and prepare, and then many other volunteers, it was packed, I mean, this was an event that, you know, has a long tradition in Villa Park. The, this year, the school sold tickets to the, to the pancake breakfast ahead of time, and the people just kept coming through and coming through, and it was fantastic, very well attended, and great to see all the volunteers and all of the residents of the city coming out and supporting that event. It was a meet So the money goes back into school programs, and each of the, there are different parts of the, different school programs got to sell tickets that would support their group, so. The, immediately after that, they had Campus Care Day, which is a tradition that has been carried on from several of our very generous members of the community, to go into the, the high school, work with the students to do school improvements, and it's attended by Rotarians as well, who help with some of the guidance, they planted several trees, a row of rose bushes, did some, like, just a lot of cleanup effort around the high school, and that happens, I know it's every year, but I think it might be every six months where that, where volunteers to come out, and I highly recommend, if anybody's interested in, in going to that very central location on our, in our city, and helping to clean it up, it's, I notice, I've done it a couple of years, and you, you go in and they'll put, paint the yellow over, you know, caution areas, and then every time you drive by, every time you see it, you, oh, that's great, that looks really good, and little things really make the whole place look so much better. And then immediately following that, I was invited to the Spring Festival, and I want to make sure I recognize a couple people there real quick, if you don't mind. I'm so sorry, I had this up, and I wanted to, so Andrea Louis is the president of the Orange Mandarin Community Booster Club, and she invited me to participate with Jeffrey Wu, who's the North Orange County Chinese School, and then this was also sponsored by our Villa Park Community Services Foundation, the three of them collaborated together to provide games, presentations, and dances, and just a fantastic Spring Festival over at the high school, and it was just a pleasure to see that, and so much fun to, to participate in, they did such a great job there, and really excited to see that partnership kind of grow, and more events with those three in the community. And with that, I will close it out by adjourning the meeting in honor of thankfulness, and everybody being grateful for the great city that we live in, and wish everybody a fantastic month.